Good evening.
And you can say, "City of San Carlos."
City of San Carlos. City Council's...
Successor.
Successor. Emergency to the revolve...
Redevelopment.
Revolve meant...
Agency.
Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting, August 27, 2018, 7:00 PM.
All right.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for which it is sacred and for which it is rightful, with liberty and justice for all.
What I should have done, even before Grace started, this is our mayor for a day, Grace Poplar. And so she's going to run the first part of the meeting. And if she does well, I'll let her do the whole meeting, and I'm going to go home.[651.48][651.48](Laughter). And I know she's going to do well because she's been practicing, so it's all good. And ironically, her brother did it last year. Yep, who raises his hand? So, anyway, so we'll move on to item number three. What is... Go ahead, Grace.
Changes to order in the... of the agenda?
No changes from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Any changes from anybody else? Okay, no. Okay.
Report from the closed session?
There's no report from the closed session, Madam Mayor.
Public comment?
You can read this person's wish.
Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the post-state agenda may do so.
Okay. We have one slip, and you can read the gentleman's name.
Ken Castle.
Castle. Mr. Castle?
Good evening, council members. I'm here tonight to discuss an important program that involves training residents for emergency preparedness. You probably know about it. It's called Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT. And it's been a fixture of fire departments across the country since 1993. Although CERT courses have been offered annually to residents of San Carlos and Redwood City as part of the fire department's outreach program, the future of our local CERT program was thrown into doubt when the Redwood City Council voted to eliminate the position of emergency preparedness coordinator as part of several budget reductions approved earlier this year. As you may know, Kristi Adonis has been serving that position for nearly 10 years. She spent time with the San Carlos Police Department before joining the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department as CERT coordinator. And she's held that position since 2013, when San Carlos outsourced its fire department operations to Redwood City. In the past week, Redwood City Fire Department has hosted three public outreach sessions to get opinions from current CERT Academy members about a plan to move the program to the San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services. Redwood City has offered to pay roughly half of that position cost, which is around $192,000. The fire department session that I attended here at San Carlos Library provided plenty of feedback from CERT graduates. First, they were concerned that localization of CERT to our community would be diluted under county control. They expressed a lot of support for Kristi Adonis for her years of service, her passion, commitment to this program. They were concerned that she would not automatically retain her position in the reformed CERT under the county. They questioned why Redwood City would undertake any cutbacks in the fire department when its resources are needed more than ever for mutual aid support to cal-fire, to battle all those wildfires in California. As every CERT resident knows, there's always a possibility that citizen resources will be needed in a major disaster such as an earthquake. Question I have for the councils, whether you were consulted by Redwood City Council before this action was taken. Many people showed up at the Redwood City Council meetings during the budget discussions to voice opposition to these cutbacks. I realize that management of our... and control of our fire department, like our police department, is in the hands of another agency. But I would hope that the city and the council would weigh in on these proposals. I'd encourage you to get engaged on this before the issue is a done deal. I hope there's still some level of collaboration and cooperation on fire services, and that Redwood City would not unilaterally make other impactful decisions, such as closing one of our fire stations without consulting with our city government and our community. Hopefully, you can address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak tonight on items not on the agenda? Okay. Okay, we're going now to the consent calendar.
Consent calendar.
These are items that are normally voted on in one motion. Do I have any removals? If not, entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent items A through K.
Second. All right, nicely. It's been moved and seconded.
It's been... It's been moved in second.
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion?
Hearing none.
Hearing none.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Sully?
Yes. We'd like you to vote on it, but that wouldn't be legal if you voted, so...[945.01][945.01](Laughter). Okay, the next item here.
Study session.
And you can read this.
Received update to provide direction regarding on...
On-street?
The on-street dining pilot program.
Okay. So we're going to have someone come up and give us that. And... But before we do that, I want to thank the mayor for a day, Grace Poplar, for doing a great, great job.[977.01][977.01](Applause). We had last Monday, I took Grace and her brother and her mom. We went to... We toured the fire department. We toured the police department. And we toured the corporation yard. And Grace received a hard hat with her name on it, right?
Yeah.
And you had a street sign say what, "Gracie's Way"?
Yes.
"Gracie's Way." So that's cool. So, anyway, tell us how old you are and what school you go to.
I go to White Oaks.
And what grade?
Third.
Third grade. Super. Well, thank you very much, Grace. I appreciate it. Thank you. And as last year, there's no requirement that you stay for any later part of the meeting. I know the young people have to go home and either do homework or get some rest for tomorrow's school. So, all right. Mr. Seve, study session. Go for it.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Back in 2015, the city created a pilot program for a temporary on-street dining program for up to two restaurants to put on these on-street dining programs for about 18-month period. One of the restaurants was approved for 18 months, and that was Town. And as the Wheeler Plaza parking garage was taken offline, and there was more pressure in the downtown for parking, the City Council put a hold on this project in terms of moving forward with a second restaurant. And so the council recently asked us to bring this back now that the Wheeler Plaza parking garage has been reopened. And to provide you with a brief presentation on the details and to get some guidance from the council this evening, I'd like to introduce Adam Aronson, who will give you a brief presentation. He's our economic development coordinator. Adam?
Welcome, Adam.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm here tonight to provide an update on the city's on-street dining program and provide... present a few issues for the council's consideration. As a brief reminder, the on-street dining pilot program began as one of council's strategic plan items with the goal of enhancing economic development in San Carlos by bringing forward proposal for temporary restaurant parklets. The pilot program was adopted by council in 2015, with restrictions stating that only restaurants in the downtown area could apply. That would be limited to two restaurants. The restaurants would take measures to offset the use of public parking, and that the pilot program would last 18 months. Three completed applications were received for the program. Of those three, the selection committee recommended that Town move forward as their design was felt to be the most complete and in line with the feel of downtown San Carlos. For the other two applicants, Lucando Positano, which is now Titorio de Vittorio, and Pia Chere, the committee had design-related comments and requested revised proposals. Town was then reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission and began operation in early 2017. Soon after, both Titorio de Vittorio and Pia Chere submitted revised designs to the selection committee. However, before a selection was made, the council decided that due to concerns related to the closure of the parking lot at Wheeler Plaza, selection of a second site should be delayed until the new garage at Wheeler Plaza was open. In July, the new garage opened to the public with a formal ribbon cutting scheduled for September. As a reminder, the selection criteria for the process was originally set by council and included a number of factors, such as compliance with city code and regulations, but placed a heavy emphasis on high-quality design and materials that would complement the existing downtown infrastructure. The selection committee that was formed includes representatives from the commissions that can be seen here, as well as city staff. With this background in mind, there are three issues for council to now consider. The first is whether a second on-street dining location should be considered as originally envisioned in the pilot program. The second is should the pilot program be changed to instead include only one location, which is already in operation at Town? And third and finally, as the Town location has now been in operation for 18 months, should the pilot program for Town be extended? So that concludes the portion of the presentation for this study session. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and would also like to point out that Greg St. Clair, the owner of Town, is here to also answer any questions you may have regarding his experience with the program.
Did you want to go to the last slide? Then there's one more, just to show us what parking's there.
Yeah, so just an overview of the parking areas downtown. You'll see the old spots that have been on Laurel Street for a while, as well as the new spaces that are at Wheeler Plaza. Overall, it'd be a net gain of 64 spaces from what was previously at the parking lot at Wheeler Plaza.
Questions for staff? Mr. Obert?
Thank you, Bob. Thanks for a good presentation. I just had a couple of basic questions. Under the pilot program, what happens if, for whatever reason, at some point in time, if the council decides, okay, we're going to end the pilot program?
So if we ended the program, the restaurants would be responsible for moving... removing any structures they put on the parking lots, and they'd be responsible for the costs.
Okay. And does... In staff's thinking, and maybe this... Maybe there isn't staff thinking, and you're literally just asking us for our input, on your third issues for consideration, should the pilot program for Town be extended? Are you thinking along the lines of extending it under the current terms and conditions, where again, if for some reason in the future we decided that this isn't working, it'd be, you know, after some notification period, you have to remove it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Growcott?
So, one of the... Just to understand this, one of the options would be to extend it to Town, so they get to keep what they have, but then also offer it to just one other location? Or could it be multiple locations?
So under the pilot program, only two locations are allowed. If the program was to be made permanent, we could extend it to additional locations, but that would be...
So if we... If we extended the pilot program, what's the duration of that, then?
18 months.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Adam. Nice presentation. Couple of questions. You list the Wheeler Plaza parking spaces. Is all of Wheeler Plaza now open, first and second floor, for the public?
Yeah, so both first and second floor are open. There are a few spaces where they have some construction work that's stored there to kind of help support the ongoing work above.
Okay, I wasn't aware, and I knew the first level was open, but now they're both open?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I assume that whatever the second location would be would also take three spaces, three parking spaces?
Yes, as currently proposed, they would.
All right. And then what happens if, you know, one of these restaurants closes, like Positano, just, you know, they, without much warning, just decided to close down? I would assume that they're responsible for removing the structures that they put up?
Yeah, if they were to suddenly close, they'd be responsible for removing the structures. The alternative is if they were to sell to a different location, that new owner could take it over.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
So the purpose of doing a pilot program is to do an experiment, to determine if the experiment was successful. And so one of the things that I think was missing was, you know, what is staff's evaluation of the 18 months? You know, has this been, from the staff's perspective, positive for the city in the various different dimensions that we could think about? You know, do people like it? Does it generate revenue for the city? You know, have there been any reported problems? How does staff support that? And I sort of framed the question because, from my perspective, I think it's been a net benefit. And I think part of what the staff is proposing with extending the pilot program or widening the pilot program is, should we keep experimenting? And at what point do we decide to make a call that, yes, this has been a successful experiment for the city? So I don't know. If you or Al, do you guys have some perspective on...
Yeah, I think our evidence, I think like yours, is mostly anecdotal. When the parklet first went in, we did hear from a number of residents for several months afterwards that were upset about the parking, which is always at a premium downtown during lunchtime and dinnertime rushes. But, you know, it's been 18 months, and I haven't heard much about that in months in terms of that specific complaint. And over the 18 months, the compliments and folks who've said that they really enjoy the outdoor dining experience there have certainly outnumbered significantly the original complaints that we had heard around parking. Certainly, an option for the council would be to end the pilot program phase for Town and just make it permanent. You know, if you give us that direction, we'll prepare whatever needs to be prepared to make that happen. In addition, if you wanted to extend it to two additional locations, making it a total of three, that would be some direction that you could give us today as well. This is a study session item, so we're just looking for all that feedback. So good dialogue so far.
And so one clarification on that, then. Say if we said, hey, we did a pilot 18 months, it's successful, now we want to create a program for the city. Could you just give us a little bit in terms of what that would entail? Is that something that would come straight back to us relatively quickly? Or is that something that needs a lot of process? Does it go to the Planning Commission? Those kinds of things?
If we were to do that, it would take a little bit of time. We'd have to undertake some studies to figure out what we'd want to charge for rent for the use of the parking spaces. And then as well, we'd have to revise some of the city's current outdoor dining ordinances. And so it wouldn't be immediate, but we could come back with something pretty quickly.
And then one final question. For the pilot program, did Town pay fees to the city for the... for setting it up? And is there... Are those recurring fees? Were they one-time fees?
So they had to pay their building and encroachment permit fees, but there weren't any fees for use of the parking spaces.
And how much was the building and encroachment?
I think they came out to around $900 total in fees.
Okay.
But Greg can certainly correct me.
And if you were to formalize it into a program, you would revisit kind of what those kind of fees would be? Would you anticipate that there would be different fees?
I don't believe so. There would certainly probably be a new fee for the use of the parking spaces, but I think that'd be the only one.
Okay. All right, thank you.
If you wanted to direct us to do otherwise.
Mr. Obert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, sorry. One of the things that, just sort of to follow on what Cameron was talking about, because I was kind of curious what the public reaction to this was. I would mostly second what Jeff said a minute ago about the number of complaints in general seems to have reduced over time. I will say that, in my experience, it is the most common thing that I... Negative criticism is the most common thing that I get hit with about the parklets when I'm manning the booth at Farmer's Market. Every week, every week I do it, there's always at least one or two people come up to tell me they think it's a really bad idea. And maybe that's just bad luck on my part, but that's there. Now, on the other hand, I did, because I was curious, and I don't mean this as a scientific poll, but I put a little note out on Nextdoor, and I was surprised about this item tonight. And I was surprised that there was some negative feedback, but there was actually a very large amount of positive feedback from people who really like it. The couple of questions that I'm not... I'm glad this is a study session, because I'm not sure I'm ready tonight to give specific direction, is I'm a little bit concerned about doing an experiment with one or two sites is one thing. Opening it up, what do we... We have a lot of restaurants on Laurel Street. What would we do if every one of them came forward and said, hey, by the way, why are you letting those two guys do this? You know, you're making thousands of dollars for them. We want to be able to do that, too. And at some point, we start losing a significant portion of our parking spaces. And we do have to be concerned to some extent about, you know, we do have residents whose mobility issues, whose mobility is limited. And while parking spaces right on Laurel Street are very rare, unfortunately, and they turn over quickly, we still have to be concerned about that. So did staff do any sort of thinking or analysis about the scope of a program? How many restaurateurs have you heard from who'd like to do this?
So I believe at the original application process, we only received the three applications. We haven't looked into if we're to open it permanently beyond just two locations in the pilot program yet. That would something we need to... That would something we need to be able to study further to figure out what's actually sustainable. And, you know, it's also part of the goal of just starting out with two spaces to see what kind of impact that really has and whether adding a third one isn't feasible, or if there's, still seems to be room to grow the program.
I will say, just in passing, as regards that personally, you know, we originally did target this as two sites, and then we temporarily suspended the second one because of the Wheeler issue. I personally would have no problem going back saying, let's go back to the original experiment and have a second site and see what happens. That's just me. One other thing, by the way, I do hope however, whatever we do going forward, we will maintain the obligation of the restaurateurs to take some actions to reduce the amount of parking demand. We did that with Town, and they were very clever in this. I think they give discounts to people if you come by Mass Transit, or Uber, or Lyft, or Taxi, or whatnot. And I had Jeff check, and they've given out $11,000 worth of discounts to customers as a result of that over an 18-month period, which works out to be actually quite a few parking spaces or parking space windows that got turned back. So I applaud them for doing that. I hope we have some kind of rules like that going forward, whatever we do, just to make sure there's some kind of give back to the city.
Mr. Grocott?
So the last question for staff that I have is, or this gentleman here, is if we were to broaden it beyond two locations, can you walk us through how, what would be the application process and how those would get approved?
So the application process for the pilot program is we developed a form that everyone had to complete, and then they had to submit along with that form, kind of providing info on the restaurant and their intended uses, as well, as well as a draft design plan. So all of the applicants that came in originally had all hired architects and designers to provide plans. At that stage, the staff, the selection committee that we had here were reviewing those. We probably want to revise that. I don't know if the selection committee is more just for the pilot program, but that stage-
Give us, give us a little description of the selection committee, then?
So the selection committee included four city staff members, as well as representatives from the Transportation and Circulation Commission, EDAC, as well as the Planning Commission and the Chamber of Commerce. And so the stage after that is to then go to Planning Commission formally with the design, and then there's then a review by Planning Commission, which can sometimes come with some feedback for revisions.
And just a comment or two, then, on how, if that were to be changed, what, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but you said you might want to change that committee makeup. What are you thinking there when you said that?
Well, so the selection committee right now, the people who are on it, there wasn't a long-term commitment past the pilot program, so we'd want to look into whether people are willing to do that, I suppose.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
So I have sort of a practical question about how this would work, and I'm not exactly sure how to phrase the question, but I think one of the reasons that I perceive the current parklet to be successful is that there's a lot of people there, and there's a lot of energy, and that's because there's a lot of demand for Town. And I, and I see what Town has done as a way to increase capacity for Town, and the fact that it's on the street is a nice benefit, but it's just expanding the number of people that can come to Town. I can imagine a different restaurant in a different situation saying, having a parklet is a way for me to be a competitive differentiator against my, against other restaurants. And, hey, people like to eat outside, but then effectively, the restaurant just shifts onto the street, and the, and the restaurant inside is empty, and there's just dining in the street. And I don't know if that has the same kind of positive benefit to the street life on Laurel Street. Is that a consideration? Do you think about that in terms of the application process, where it's like, I'm just building my building out in the street versus I'm expanding the capacity of a business? And through the public process, are we able to use that as a criteria to decide who to grant a parklet to? Do the, do the rules allow for that?
So we don't explicitly have anything regarding to sales revenue or sales receipts as some of our selection criteria right now. I think that'd be up for council to consider if they wanted to direct us to try and include that as criteria.
But do you understand what I'm talking about conceptually?
Yeah.
Okay. And so the, and there's nothing in, there's nothing that would legally prevent us from having that as a criteria? I mean, and would you advise that that is a worthwhile criteria to include?
I think it could be. I think it would be tricky to figure out how exactly you would develop that criteria in a way that's able to easily measure and isn't clearly just a judgment call.
Okay.
So I had a couple of thoughts on this. First of all, I think the pilot program should be extended because, as evidenced by the fact of, there might be, as someone mentioned, there's a lot of restaurants on Laurel Street, and they might line up 20 at a time to do this. I know Menlo Park and Mountain View have a lot of them. Some are nice, some aren't very nice. I applaud our staff for making sure that we have design guidelines. Some of the ones I've seen in other towns, they just sort of throw up a couple of pieces of wood and a shade, and that's it. But I, but I do think that it should be extended. I also think that we should allow two to come, the other two to come in, because they've already spent a substantial amount of time and money to, they weren't selected, but they're probably, hopefully 75 or 80% done. So that's my thought, that they should both be quasi-grandfathered in for the next 18 months, or when they start from 18 months. And the next item I thought that should happen, because it was also mentioned about our ADA and people that are difficult to, and I've had that comment, there aren't enough ADA slots, is, and I know someone may say, well, now you're going to take more spots off the street, but I think we ought to add at least two, if not three, but certainly two ADA spots for 700, 800, and put some on 600. Now granted, there's another maybe six, eight, nine, 10 spots, plus the other six. At 16, people are going to scream. We're getting 60-plus spots at Wheeler Plaza. To me, that more than overshadows and also speaks to the issue that was brought up about ADA. That's just my thought. I know we have to have a consensus and give direction to council, or to staff, rather. So anyway, I think it's a great program. I think it should be extended, because I think the next step is to have some ideas of what will happen if five more people come in. Can we, can we handle all those? But I do believe we need additional ADA spots also. Anyway, those are my thoughts. Mr. Grocott, last comment or thought, and then we'll get the public comment.
Okay. So past the question part.
I'm sorry?
We're past asking questions, and now we can give some feedback?
Yeah, I didn't have any, because you asked them all, so, yeah.
No, that's right. I didn't ask them all, but-
I meant the-
Yeah, I understand. So my, my comment on this, as somebody, you know, I voted against this initially. I've, like Mark, I've, you know, heard feedback from people about, why did you do this, especially with Wheeler Plaza closed and so forth, and the parking issue? But overall, for Town, I think it works really well. I've had other restaurants ask me, you know, hey, what can we do to, that aren't on the list of those other two, who've said, you know, we'd like to do the same thing. So, you know, the way I look at it, the only way to make it fair is to open it up all the way. And I think staff ought to look at that. What would be the criteria? And, you know, how do we, how do we process the applications? I think Cameron asked a very fair question about, you don't want some restaurant having their little parklet, and inside their dining hall, it's empty, you know, everybody's moved outside. That's not right. So you have, you would have to develop something where you're looking at their receipts, and are they full, and what nights are they full, and what's, are they over capacity? You'd have to do that, because you can't have a restaurant that is, you know, not very full, doing a parklet, and everything's just outside. That's, you know, that's just my opinion. I see other council members wagging their, you know, maybe saying no to that, but that's my opinion. Bottom line, I think, to make it fair to the market, you have to open it up to everybody, pretty much. That said, as someone who does design for a living, I think this is putting a Band-Aid on a broken design. And I think really what needs to be talked about is, what does this community want for Laurel Street? And I've heard people talk about one-way, or make it pedestrian from certain hours, or whatever, and we're not looking at those things. And, you know, as a designer, those, that's, that's the thing that I would do, is I would have a community meeting and talk about, what do we want to do with Laurel Street? It's, you know, because the city, the downtown, as a community, it's a broader part of where we live, outside of our homes. You know, we go downtown, we enjoy our downtown, and so how do we want to use it? And I think that's the bigger question here.
Mr. Olbert?
Yes, actually, first off, I wanted to say I very much support, Bob, your idea of, independent of this, actually increasing the number of ADA spaces on Laurel Street, and maybe that's something we should ask staff and TNC to look at, you know, what's the right number? I'd certainly support doing that. And I appreciate you mentioning it. I've had the same conversations, the same thoughts, and spent time with staff about some of the things Matt was talking about on sort of the future of Laurel Street, and I'm sure we all have. Maybe that, too, is something that we should task TNC or Planning Commission to go off and do some research and some thinking about, sort of figure out what, what are the conditions you need to make various ideas work? Because, you know, when I first had the idea with, and talked to Jeff about it a few years ago, he made me go out and count the number of parking spaces on the first block of Laurel Street, of which there were 56. And that's, that's a significant number of parking spaces downtown. So my idea of, let's close off the first block of Laurel Street, he's like, solve the parking problem for me, and maybe we can talk about it. But it may be time to have that discussion, and do a little visioning, and say, okay, maybe we don't have the extra parking we need right now, but what do we do to get the extra parking? Okay? So I, again, I think these are good topics for the Planning Commission to look into.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I generally agree with previous comments, although I think we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves. We're talking about pretty much three options right now. I think we ought to decide, give some direction on one of these three options, and those other things we can look at, but I think that, you know, merchants want to know, you know, what's our, what's our direction right now? What do we want to have happen right now? I would like us to see, to make a decision on that, whether we add ADA places, or if we open it up to everybody. Fine, we can study that, but I think we need to focus on this now. I wanted to make one other comment. Matt had a good point about, you know, opening up to restaurants who want to do it. My thinking, though, is that if you're a restaurant downtown, you're probably not going to be investing the money in a parklet if you can't fill your restaurant right now. So, and I can think of maybe two others that are, you can count on being 100% full, almost, you know, four or five nights a week. So I think that, the market may decide that, but I really think we ought to just focus on, you know, what direction are we going to give immediately for these options?
The only comment I'd have, last comment is, or at least for the moment, is Mr. Johnson and Mr. Grocott, when the weather is nice, people are going to come out and sit outside, and they're going to leave empty spaces inside. At least I am. So I don't think, I don't think it's going to work to legislate. If people want to sit outside, let them sit outside. Granted, it expands the restaurant's number of seats, but I know I walk by Pia Chery a lot of times, and, and I don't know, I don't look back there, but I'm assuming, but the, the street, when the sun's out, people are sitting outside. So I think that's a nonstarter personally for me, because I don't know how you would go to enforce it. But anyway, we have a couple of speakers, and maybe more. So Mr. St. Clair, would you like to come up and speak? Like to keep it to about three minutes if you can, but if you have more time-
Mr. Mayor and Council, I will definitely give it my best shot. So kind of the history of this thing, I think many of you know that I was kind of the proponent for this, and not just for my restaurant, but as a resident, a building owner, and a business owner, I'd kind of, you know, we have to get kind of creative with our downtown and agree very much, Matt, with what you said of looking at it in a, in a, in a bigger way. The timing was really bad on this. I even wish I hadn't done it at the time, because by the time we came about and put our project in play, it was the same with all the other construction projects, a big building behind us being built. So it was kind of a perfect storm for a negative launch. That being said, it's, you know, it's a really tough time for restaurants and retail. And since that launch, there's not really a whole lot of demand. I actually went around getting the pulse. I don't think Pia Chery has any interest anymore. I spoke with the owner of Trattiga Dovatorio. He has no interest. It is kind of a, you know, as Ron, you said, it, the economy will dictate it. It's, my parklet was $281,000 when it was all said and done to put in. And, you know, I do applaud San Carlos for having strict guidelines, and I wanted the first parklet to come off in a good manner. How cities approach it, I've done a ton of research on this. Menlo Park actually decided to approve seven parklets and make the process very easy, and actually fiscally supported. They actually paid the first $30,000 of the parklet. I'm not a big fan of how they approached it. I do, you know, they feel a little bit thrown up, and I don't know that, a parklet's not going to make a restaurant successful, you know? And in the criteria, I think it is important to look at sales, tax revenue, make sure that they can stand it, but you're not going to get people just jumping on this program, because the cost of entry is really daunting. And in a very thin industry, it's, I think you're going to get a lot of people, you know, not jumping all over it. Just some math, in terms of, of the effect at Town. It's another full seven-time employees. In 2017, the parklet generated a little over $967,000 in revenue. And this year, if it to continue in 2018, the revenue will be close to a million, or an additional, you know, $87,000 in sales tax revenue. You know, I'm, I'm here to be a partner of the city with this thing and going forward. I would love to see the program expand. I don't, you know, again, I don't think it's going to be one of these things where every restaurateur is going to want to jump on it, and I do feel that it should be a revenue generator for the city. So there has, there were some discussions, I believe, Al, we had some about annual permits or a per-seat license, and, you know, being very strict on maintaining the street, and that it's an asset, both financially for the city, and it's also an asset for all of the residents who live here. Because I just, you know, you look at any design thing, Matt, you know this well, you want to open up your businesses and cafes and spilling out are a huge thing. And some places have, you know, really resurrected their downtowns, you know, Boulder, Colorado closed off their, their main street, and it's incredibly vibrant part of their downtown as the anchor. Santa Monica, the promenade, it's got a really unique history that kind of resurrected that area. I'm not quite sure, I'd have to study more to give my recommendation on that, but I do feel that, you know, some of the, the parking issues will be mitigated as, as we start to close these projects off. And I think that I wouldn't recommend expanding it until we kind of get through that phase. You guys would get a lot less grief, I think, on that end. I do agree that the ADA issues, I mean, the installation of our parklet didn't have any impact on the ADA load in the city, but I do feel that we are a little bit short. It's difficult, the ADA parking spaces in the back, I think it'd be advantageous in the busier areas to probably add a couple spaces. And, you know, as was mentioned, that would be more than offset with the Wheeler Plaza project. You know, so, you know, we have tried to mitigate with, you know, our discount to customers. We try to push it as much as possible. We're not, our clientele is not a big, big user of coupons. I think they, but we still, we, beyond the discount that we give, we see Ubers coming in and out all the time, and we will, regardless of what happens with the parklet program, we'll continue that, and we do it at our other restaurants as well. It's just a responsible thing to do in the downtown. So, I mean, it's, you know, I hope that you continue it. I hope that we look for a couple other restaurants. I know the Cask does some significant volume, and the owner, Kurt, is very interested in it. It would have a significant impact on him from going from a thin margin to really helping his business out, and, but, you know, as I said, there's not going to be a rush to do this, because they're just trying to meet payroll right now. Appreciate your time.
Could you, could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You don't seem very enthusiastic. Am I missing something? I would, I had expected, maybe I'm wrong, and I, on me. I thought you'd come up and say, wow, this is great, this is super.
No, it's fantastic.
Thank you so much. But your tone seems to think like, nah, can I take it out? I mean, honestly, I'm not trying to be critical, sir.
No, no, I mean, we definitely don't. I mean, you know, it would mean, it'd be a devastating impact to, you know, like all the new employees.
I guess it's just the way you speak, and I've never heard you speak before.
You, you guys have been great to deal with. It's been a, you know, I'm not coming up here and ranting and raving that you can't do it. I mean, I want you to carefully study it. I mean, I live here.
Right.
You know, and I'm looking at it from a long-term perspective, and, and it's not, you know, I'm not, I understand, you know, that the issues of the elderly and parking know, I'm not, I understand, you know, that the issues of the elderly and parking in the downtown, but I think that we can get creative with it. I mean, I think, I would love to see this a permanent part of our city, and then I would like us to look at it in a much bigger way, where, you know, you really could do something special with Laurel Street. I mean, we're, honestly, we're in a competition with, for residents and businesses against all these other cities. And, you know, it, there's a lot of, you know, I mean, I'm, we do business in Redwood City, we do business in Palo Alto, and it's phenomenal, the growth we've seen. While Redwood City's getting a hard time, it is, our sales are unbelievable down in the downtown and they're only at the tip of the iceberg. And we've, I think it's affected us. I mean, you know, we are not at the prime of our restaurant. We've lost volume in a lot of restaurants. We've lost volume where the Menlo Park residents are no longer coming over here like they used to. The Redwood City restaurants, now the residents are staying there. You've got new projects in San Mateo. You've got, you know, a lot of cities getting aggressive and creative where we don't have that luxury of just sitting back and, you know, kind of killing a pilot program like this. I think we need to get unique and think outside the box, because our streets are narrow. Laurel Street is not, you know, it's thin and narrow. You got to create, get creative about how to make it unique.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm very enthusiastic about it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Didn't mean to sound that way, Bob.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't want to toss out a $281,000 parklet either.
No, I understand. You were the first one and you were the guinea pig on that, for sure. Okay, thanks. Couple more speakers here. Barry Mains, I'm sorry, I apologize.
So, council members, thanks, first of all, for all you do for the city of San Carlos. I know your job's not easy. I'm sure, I think I was standing next to you when you got one of those complaints. I actually walked away after that thinking, you know. So, anyway, I know how it can be. So, and again, thanks for letting me speak. My wife and I moved here in 1994 and we raised two kids here. And one of the reasons why we moved here was we saw what was going on in the community here. Downtown, you guys have done great things with the farmer's market and attracting restaurants. I mean, it's great. And probably the most, you know, kind of attractive thing for us is the sense of community. I mean, it shows up in your core values five out of the, five times out of 10 values. And I think those parklets really add sense of community. I mean, I think you go down there, you get that buzz, you know, it's vibrant. You know, I have lots of people that I entertain, you know, with business and whatnot and people from out of the country, and they love it. They say, this is fantastic. I mean, I know my friends really like it a lot and, you know, it just kind of gives that sense that we're doing something that, you know, makes it attractive to live here. And I do think that people come here because of the energy and, you know, kind of downtown and stuff. So I wanted to say, as a resident and someone that, you know, frequents downtown, I think it's a great idea and I think you guys have to sort out some of the issues, but, you know, I'm in favor.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Erin Donovan.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. I want to give you guys one guess where I'm having lunch tomorrow. I'm taking a neighbor of mine that's a very close friend to town for a meeting. And I literally went and looked to see, I drive him all over the place, but I went and drove down Laurel to make sure and see how many ADA parking we have. And yes, I do like a sense of community. It's a wonderful thing. However, our elderly, they are a part of our community. Our people with disabilities are a very big part of our community. The ADA that I saw today, there's one that is in the temporary parking area and I literally pulled in, I was hoping I wouldn't get a ticket, to take a picture of the post that I couldn't open the door if I needed to in order to get the ramp down in the van, if I needed to get the wheelchair out and have that space. There's also a few other ADA parking on Laurel Street that are up against a curb. And so I don't know what, I know there are restrictions and guidelines, but I don't think that these are all really well-thought-out ADA parking, accessibility parking for our people, that we want to continue to have a part of our community. So this is one of my main concerns. I walk down here with my daughter. I'm so fortunate to live close enough to be able to walk downtown. However, I did damage my leg a couple months ago and to just even walk from Wheeler Plaza to go and take my dry cleaning in would have been a very hard thing to do. So parking is very important. I do hear a lot of talk about closing the street to have all walking and no cars. And to me, that sounds wonderful, except we do eliminate a lot of our community. So please, do think about adding, I mean, at this point in my life, I won't even park at Wheeler Plaza, I'll walk downtown all the time. Let's add a bunch of ADA parking, okay? And maybe even some 20-minute parking for people that do need to drop off their laundry and they don't have a placard, but they can't walk from Wheeler's Plaza all the way down to the different stores that they might want to go to. Thank you for everything you are doing. It's wonderful. Thank you for putting things on next door, because I do like to read what everybody has to say. And yet, a lot of people don't come out and complain. So I hope I'm not complaining too much. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this, Adam? All right. Gentlemen, what direction do we want to give to staff?
Mr. Mayor, just one sort of minor thing, just, I do hope that, sort of building off of what Erin just said, I do hope that we will ask staff to have TNC or Planning Commission, whoever, to look at this and look at the parking portfolio downtown and maybe make some recommendations on changes. As far as the parklet thing is concerned, I, I'm personally fine with reopening that second slot that we temporarily closed off. If we want to make it a third, I can sort of see doing that. I start getting nervous about sort of suddenly going to letting anybody who wants to, despite what Greg said, because I'd like to have more thought go into what might happen. But certainly reinstating the second one is fine with me.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
So I'll add my support for the idea of looking at more ADA parking downtown. From my perspective, purpose of a pilot program is to do an experiment. We've done an experiment. The feedback has been positive. I think we should conclude the experimental phase, move into the phase of making it permanent. There is nothing that means that you can't, there's nothing special about a pilot program that, like, you can only change a pilot program, but you can't change it once you make it permanent? We can start a program for parklets in San Carlos, and if it doesn't work, you can amend it, you can change it, you can rescind it. We have full power to do that. But I think, you know, extending a pilot program for another 18 months, you're just going to kind of be back at the same place, and I don't know that you're going to have a substantially different result. So I don't know if everyone on the DIAS would support that idea, but I would, I think the experiment is successful. It adds to the quality of life of San Carlos and we should formalize it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Collins.
I would agree. I like the idea of extending it. I also agree with Mr. Olbert that I would like to add a second parklet. There may not be the demand for it, but, you know, I think that's a nice, it's a good number. I'd rather not just go to three right now. We just, let's see what happens. And I'm also supportive with adding more ADA parking. I've had friends that I know in town that have brought that up to me as well. So that seems to be a theme.
Mr. Grocott?
I agree with Cameron. I think this is more, I think the experiment's over and it's now at a point of what will the market bear? And I think the comments about, I hadn't thought about that, you know? So my comments about checking their receipts and that sort of thing, no, you don't need to, because I think, I think the expense to get into it, you know, would create the limit that you're looking for. So I'm willing to open it up all the way. Done with the experiment, let's move on.
Well, I, either way, I mean, I can go either way on that experiment or non-experiment, because I agree that the people that want to do it will figure out the economics, if it works or doesn't work for them, ahead of time, before they do it. I think, I think both, but I do think that if the two people that are right now out want to do it, I think they should both be allowed to. I don't think it should be just one more. I think it should be two more, because, at least the option. If they don't want to do it, that's fine. Then we'll, in other words, we have two out there, we give them the opportunity to do it if they want. If one doesn't want to, fine. If both don't want to, fine. Then we'll have, we'll send it to staff to figure out what is, some good ordinances or good ways to make it happen. But I think both of them ought to have the opportunity. They both spent money ahead of time. They weren't selected. And if they want to follow up on that, I think they should be allowed to. So that's my opinion. So, what kind of direction is that? That's like four different ways here.
Yeah, I think we're going to need a little more dialogue from the council to be able to settle that particular point. I was going to ask about it.
Why don't we go for, why don't we start with the pilot program versus a wide open? And we'll, maybe we can figure that one out first. Does that make sense?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, sorry.
So to me, ending the experiment and saying we're going to allow parklets in San Carlos doesn't necessarily mean that every single restaurant is allowed to. I support your position of those that applied in the past. We should figure out a way to give them the option to do it. I think it's much more of going back to staff, working with the Planning Commission, Economic Development Commission, to figure out what's the criteria for a formal program that's sustainable, let's say for over a 10-year time horizon, something like that, that we think is workable for the city. Rather than saying, let's kick this 18 months and then kind of have the same conversation. The question is, what new information are we going to get in 18 months?
Okay. I tend to agree with you on that. I think, I think we can do that, but I think the two ought to get a shot at it and then we set up some staff to look at possible increase in, or ordinances or whatever. Mr. Olbert?
Yeah, my biggest concern, I mean, I don't want to get hung up on whether something is a pilot program or not, because I think as Cameron said, or somebody said, the reality is that unless we were to grant the ability to do these by right, then we can basically amend the rules at any time that three of us decide to amend the rules, you know, if circumstances change. But that said, I, the more we simply throw the door open, the more I really want to see some very careful staff work, thoughtful staff work on what the likely impacts are going to be or could be, how could we manage them? What happens if there are situations where we go, hey, we need to remove the ability to add a new parklet? Do we just go whoever the last person is that built one, we say, you have to tear yours down? I mean, there's a whole bunch of ramifications here for going, quote, "permanent," that we haven't really addressed yet, because we didn't need to, because it was a pilot program. So if we want to commit to do something like that, it sounds to me like that's going to take a fairly long period of time to do it. I wouldn't mind seeing that done in parallel with, like you said, the two people who already applied.
Right.
If they still want to do it, let them go ahead and do it, but nobody else at this point, until the other process is complete.
Okay.
To help, direction, I'll go with what the mayor said. I think that's fine.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
I agree with your...
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I agree with your assessment. I think we should go that direction.
Mr. Johnson?
Maybe to summarize, what I think I'm hearing is extend the existing pilot program to allow the others to apply and get going. And simultaneous direction to have staff start the process of thinking what a more permanent program would look like.
I think that's, is that the tenor of the conversation? I think that's it. Okay? And then, as an aside, and again, maybe this is completely separate, the ADA issue, and maybe that is wrapped up in the second part, where we look at the permanent amount of parking on the street. Because I certainly speak to, I've heard that a lot from folks that I know, there just aren't enough spots. And I think, hopefully, we could add a few more and make it a lot more available for folks that need it. All right, any other comments on this from the DIAS? Does staff have a direction? Okay. Now, could I just ask a question? What's going to happen on the first part, on the two folks? Does that have to go through Planning Commission? Just so I understand if someone asked me?
Mr. Mayor, it would go to the selection committee to look at the two designs. What we'll do is, we'll take a look at the design, give comments on the design from the committee, and then that would go to the Planning Commission for final approval.
But you've already looked at the design, the first design, and so people would, they realize that that isn't going to work, because it didn't work the first time. So we'll have to go in with some other changes and then you'll look at that.
That's correct.
Okay, great.
If I may follow, and I presume that in one way, shape, or form or another, Al, that some, like Greg was describing, their program to incentivize people to, something like that will exist if we award the right to somebody else?
That's the direction we're hearing this evening, and so we'll add that to the program. Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for speaking. Appreciate it. Okay. Moving on, item eight, new business. ADA consideration of establishing and appointing a council ad hoc subcommittee for assisting staff with establishing the Community Foundation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Jeff Malpe, City Manager. I'll be presenting this. As you're aware, I think it was our last meeting, it was a while ago, the council had discussed the desire to see a community foundation created here in San Carlos. And one of the points that came from the council discussion was this idea that you wanted to see more community involvement, more grassroots effort involvement in sort of designing and starting a local foundation. So we took the feedback that we got from the DIAS and we kind of synthesized a number of comments and came up with the approach of calling for applications to form just a committee, a community committee that the staff will work with and support in their efforts. So we put out a call for applications. We got 56. So there's obviously a lot of excitement and interest out there in the community to get involved with this project. But we are going to need some help from the council in terms of screening those applications and putting a committee together. Because this is a committee as opposed to a commission, that the council's probably more familiar with constantly filling commission positions, I'm asking that the subcommittee would actually just select the committee, because I'm imagining it could be quite a large number that they put on there, you know, some, close to, in the area of 20 or 25 people on a committee like this wouldn't be unheard of. So rather than have a full council interview for committee members, just allow the subcommittee to select from the group and put them onto the committee and help support their efforts that ultimately will come back to our commissions and the City Council for formal adoption, should something come from that process.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Jeff, just, and this, I'm asking for anecdotal feedback. I doubt you sort of, you know, analyze the applications this way. But any sense of whether or not, when the call went out, is it, are individuals applying because they have a specific thing they want to see funded or applying for, hey, I'd like to help build a foundation that will figure out what specific things to fund? Do you see the difference?
I do. And I can't give you a sense of a proportion to the list of who's what, but I think there's a group of people that are just very interested and see the benefits of foundations, as we do have some, that are very successful in this community already. And so I think there's an interest and excitement there. I imagine there are some people that identified specific needs in the community, and then there's a group of applicants that I'm not exactly sure they knew what they were applying for.
Thank you. I will just also mention, as a personal plug, that I'd be interested in being on the subcommittee.
Mr. Johnson?
I'll raise my hand as a volunteer as well.
Okay. The question I have is, what's your timeframe for this, of the two subcommittee members selecting the group?
I think we'll begin to immediately work with them. We have the applicants and so I think just in the next couple of weeks...
All of us would be available then, okay. So I have two volunteers, Mr. Olbert and Mr. Johnson. Is anyone else, the other council members, is that all right with them?
Yep.
All right. Need a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we appoint Mark Olbert and Cameron Johnson as the ad hoc subcommittee for the Community Foundation.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, moved in second. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, gentlemen, thank you for your volunteer. Eight B, consideration of adopting a resolution opposing state proposition six, voter approval for future gas and vehicle taxes in 2017 tax repeal initiative, 2018.
Good evening. Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Jeff Malpe, City Manager. This is something that we don't do all that often in San Carlos. We do discuss legislation on occasion, but at a, agendizing a potential proposition, statewide proposition for the agenda, something we've, we've done rarely, or perhaps a better word is sparingly, over the years, and try to limit the, this particular activity to propositions or legislation that we think could be particularly damaging to our community. So proposition six, or the voter approval for future gas tax, vehicle tax, and the 2017 tax repeal initiative is qualified for the November ballot. Proposition six has the goals of repealing SB one, which was put into place in 2017, that gas tax that's flowing to all sorts of different jurisdictions, but cities are one of them. And, and we certainly are receiving our fair share of that particular source of revenue that we use for streets and sidewalks and traffic improvement projects throughout the community, and we'll get more into that in just a little while. The proposition would also require that any future approval for fuel taxes, vehicle fee increases, would have to go to voters, and that the legislature could not do that on their own. SB one funding enables cities and counties to address significant maintenance, rehabilitation, safety on our roadways. The City of San Carlos has been receiving half a million dollars annually in SB one funding. All of that funding has been used for project design and construction, so it's being put to work out there in the community, not here at City Hall. Gives us, it's given us the opportunity to do more street paving than we've been able to do in recent years, as we've seen our gas tax numbers decline as folks do a good job of getting out of their cars and, and into mass transit and into their Ubers and their Lifts. They're not spending quite as much at the pump as the, the rise of the electric vehicle continues to grow, particularly in our region. We're seeing a decline there as well. So, leading up to SB one, we were, we had definitely seen a number of years of declining revenue, gas tax revenue, and that was affecting our ability to do street sidewalk and traffic improvements throughout the community. With that, we've, we will bring up our Public Works Director, Stephen Machida, and he'll talk a little bit more about some of the specifics about how the SB one, or in the future, Prop six could be affecting our ability to do those types of projects that have been a priority to community members here for quite a while.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Mayor, City Councilmember Stephen Machida, Director of Public Works. So as Jeff had indicated, basically, proposition six, or this essentially is the repeal of SB one, it talks about the gas tax. But basically, as City Council is well aware, the community has indicated that there is a high, high demand to improve a lot of our roads, streets, sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. And that came out in our survey. So basically, the additional $500,000 that we would normally see from SB one would actually, if the repeal wasn't in effect, would actually go away. And so that would actually further decrease the amount of spending that we would have to do on our streets and sidewalks. So what SB really, SB one really does is actually provides that additional funding to address these priorities that the community has requested. And then there has been other discussions in regards to that, you know, possibly with SB one funds, that perhaps the state government can attack that, those funds, and use that money elsewhere. But as you are well aware, Proposition 69 passed this past June, which prohibits any funds that, to be used away from transportation-related projects. So basically, SB one, these funds are specifically targeted for transportation needs. So let's talk about specifics. So as you well aware, and this chart to the right is actually came out of your budget book, but basically, as you look at the first row of gas tax, basically, it, it kind of increases from fiscal 18, 19 to 2022, but averages about $740,000 every year. As I mentioned previously, SB tax, SB one gas tax funds actually will approximate, you know, probably about $500,000 over the next five years, as you can see by the second line. The SB one, as I mentioned earlier, is in the budget, and it has been incorporated into the most recent budget that the council has passed. That being, that being said, if you look at, if we were, the SB one gas tax were to be repealed, basically, that would require council or the general fund to kind of make up for the deficit that the SB one repeal, SB one taxes would produce. So eliminating SB one will further burden the city's general fund, which then, so either we'd actually have to come from the general, general fund, the funding will have to come from the general fund, or perhaps we would have to reduce the number of streets that we actually repair. So on this slide, you might have seen this before, but basically, this is just photos of kind of the PCI index, pavement condition index that, that we use to determine or grade our streets. So on the upper left-hand corner is a street PCI range of 70 to 100, and that's kind of where we'd like to be. That's where we always strive to be. Down below, we have the PCI from 50 to 69. And currently, our streets throughout our city is about 61. So basically, we're in that range. It's not necessarily bad, but it's, we certainly would like to be in a better position than we currently are. In the upper right-hand corner, you have 30 to 49, and as you can see, you start seeing some larger dual cracking, some little bit more potholes, some base fellers. And at the very bottom, under 30, is, that would be our poor condition. And that's basically a street that's inferior, and those type of streets will actually be, needed to be reconstructed in, in its entirety. So basically, all the base needs to be redone, pavement needs redone, and be repaired. And certainly, that would be the most expensive type of improvement that we would need to do. So this slide shows kind of our street capital program, the street rehabilitation. And so this is the kind of summary of the 2017 statistics that we accomplished last year. So we paved about 3.5 miles, 725 feet of sidewalk had been repaired, 28 curb ramps replaced. And basically, just, just for your information, now whenever we do a major street reconstruction, we actually have to redo the ADA ramps to make sure they're in compliance with the state law. And so by doing so, although it's really important that we do so, doing so, changing those ramps, kind of takes away a certain amount of funding that we can apply to the streets. So basically, that further reduces the amount of money that we spend on our streets themselves. And then a little over 80,000 liter feet of traffic striping and marking that we done, and that's also funded out of gas tax. So just photos of some of the annual street resurfacing and repaving. So basically, it's all funded by gas tax. We typically spend about 1.8 million annually on the street repair. And then again, this is to maintain and rehabilitate the city's pavement to prevent costly reconstruction. Again, two other items are areas that use gas tax or sidewalk repair, as well as our traffic marking and striping. So some of the other agencies that are in opposition for Prop six, basically, we kind of contacted the various agencies, and I'm sure there's more, but the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, Belmont, Brisbane, San Mateo, Burlingame, Pacifica, various state representatives, as well as the League, California Chamber of Commerce, Public Safety, SAM Trans, and SAM SIDA. So with that, we are recommending that council adopt a resolution opposing Proposition six, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Stephen. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Stephen. Your second to the last slide, I don't know why I didn't think of this sooner. Have you heard of any public agency or community that is coming out in support of Proposition six?
We have not. Perhaps there might be, but certainly, you know, yeah, in our kind of...
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Steve. Just a couple of questions. I noticed on the first page, it said that voter approval would be required for future, any, future fuel tax and vehicle increases. Would that, do you know if that would be a two-thirds vote? Do they build, did they build that in?
It, it sounds like it would be a special tax which would require a two-thirds vote, but we can get back to you on that.
Okay. And then, the only other question I had was, do you know of any other cities that are planning resolutions opposing? It's kind of similar to Mark's question, but do you know of cities that are planning on, or working on it?
Well, from this list, as you can see, I know City San Mateo, they are planning to take something to their city council in September, so certainly that hasn't happened. I believe Burlingame as well. I believe City of Menlo Park as well, as, and East Palo Alto are planning to take a resolution to their council again in September.
At the last city manager, county-wide city managers association meeting, every city manager in attendance said that they thought that their council was going to consider a resolution like this.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay. So, gentlemen, what would you like to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to adopt Resolution 2018 dash...
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos opposing state proposition six, voter approval for future gas and vehicle taxes, and 2017 tax repeal initiative per N 2018.
I second. All right. Moved in second. Discussion? Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
All right. Moving on, eight C, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a relocation agreement for the removal of a static billboard at 171 Industrial Road, APN 046020-430, and approving a lease and sublease agreement for a digital billboard at 815 American Street, APN 046-211-160. Mr. Seve?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. As you know, the city currently has a lease with Clear Channel for a billboard at Branston. This would be for a second billboard, and one of the unique characteristics of this is that we would be doing a lease agreement with a private party to control a small piece of property along 101. It would also include a lease with Clear Channel for the digital billboard and a relocation agreement to remove the clear, the paper Clear Channel billboard at a different location. To provide you with details on this is Lisa Costa-Sanders, our principal planner, and Bruce Qualls of Clear Channel is also available to answer questions. With that, Lisa.
Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. Lisa Costa-Sanders, principal planner. Al gave a very nice introduction. So as indicated, the request is for three items this evening. A relocation agreement for the removal of a static billboard located at 171 Industrial Road that is visible from Highway 101. A lease agreement between the city and a private property owner at 815 American Street. As you're aware, the code requires all new billboards to be located on city-owned or leased property. And then finally, a sublease agreement between the city and Clear Channel Outdoor for the construction operation of a new digital billboard at 815 American Street. The major terms of the agreement, it's a 20-year initial term with a 10-year option. The city would receive 30% of the gross revenue share, with a minimum annual guarantee of $200,000 a year. The city receives that in monthly payments of $16,666. And at the end of the year, we do a true-up. And so just to give you some perspective, the existing billboard at Branston, we've received an average of an extra $200,000 per year. So that's an annual revenue of over $400,000 a year. There is also an escalation to that minimum annual guarantee of 12.5% every five years. Then as indicated, the major term of the agreement also includes the removal of the existing billboard at 171 Industrial Road. That would occur at the end of the three-year lease agreement, that that billboard with the existing property owner there. And then Clear Channel would make a $100,000 payment to the city, as well as an additional $30,000 one-time payment for a new digital sign at the adult community center. And then the red at the very top is the existing billboard that would be removed at 171 Industrial Road. At the middle of the screen, the green arrow is the existing billboard in operation on Branston. And then down at the bottom of the screen, in the blue star is the proposed billboard at 815 American Street. Excuse me. And then this is the billboard that would be removed in three years. As I indicated, it's located at the rear of the property at 171 Industrial Road, and there's the view from Highway 101. And then as you see here, this is the billboard that was approved by the Planning Commission as far as the design, as well as the environmental review. So at the top is the existing condition, and then the bottom of the screen, you see the proposed billboard. This is traveling southbound on 101. This would be the view if you're on Industrial Road, so you'd see the, the top is the existing, and the bottom, you'll see the backside of that billboard. And this is identical to the existing billboard you could view on Branston. Again, another view, this is traveling northbound, a little bit closer to the billboard of 101. The top is existing, the bottom would be the proposed condition. And then again, another view, a little bit closer up, traveling southbound 101. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions as well. Bruce Qualls from Clear Channel is here.
Questions? Well, I have a couple. So, three-year, the current billboard has three more years?
Correct.
So when would the new billboard be put up?
The new billboard would be put up after execution of this agreement and issuance of building permits. So that could go up very soon, and I can let Bruce Qualls give more details on that timeline.
Within a few months?
Correct.
So we'd have an extra billboard?
That's correct.
Okay, for three years.
For a short amount of time, yes.
Okay. You mentioned a minimum of $200,000. Let's assume it was a minimum, although it hasn't been that way, but let's assume it was. Then subtracted from that would be the $100,000 that we pay to the property owner?
No. Oh, they would give us the additional $100,000 to the property owner. So that's what the city receives. And then the additional payment that they're going to provide to us would go to the property owner. So we're, we're made whole, like the other agreement. So essentially, excuse me? Right.
Okay, so...
Well, it's 300 total, then we would pay the property owner $100,000.
It was confusing to me, the minimum, again, I'm going to the minimum, if we get $200,000, they're going to give us 300,000.
Correct.
Okay. If it's 300, they're going to give us 400?
Yes.
Okay. If it's 400, they're going to give us 500?
Right.
Okay, I'm just asking the question.
You're correct.
So we're made, we're made whole. Like I said, the 100,000 doesn't come out of our, our pocket, it comes out of Clear Channel's pocket.
Absolutely.
All right. Just, just checking. Okay. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Bob. Couple of quick ones. How far between the new billboard and the existing billboard would there be?
Between the Branston billboard?
Yeah, the Branston and the new one?
Not sure about the exact dimension. Mr. Qualls may have that information, but it's over 1,000 feet.
Over 1,000 feet. And then the other one, will the new one have that City of San Carlos logo on the pole?
It will look identical.
Okay.
Yes.
That's it.
Other questions? Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Could you fill out, later on, you have to do it now, fill out a form, so we can get for the record? Thank you.
Hi, council. Thank you for letting me speak.
Sure.
My name is Andrew Ash. I'm a homeowner and resident in San Carlos. I'm very curious, the way this is structured with the minimum for the revenue to the city is there's no upside there? So if there's like additional revenue or advertising revenue, I guess that grows in future years, none of that goes to the city? So I'm curious if the city is considered an arrangement where instead, there is a lower minimum, but a percentage of the take beyond that?
I think you're, I think you might be incorrect. Go ahead, Lisa.
If I am, please correct me.
Lisa? I think we have a, the upside covered, I think.
Sure. So the city receives 30% of the gross advertising revenue. The, the 200,000 establish that minimum threshold, and then we receive over. So as I indicated, with the billboard that we have experience with, we've been receiving on average $400,000 a year.
So there's a percentage, and then we also have a 12.5% after every five years increase on top of that?
Correct.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure that everyone understood. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to adopt Resolution 2018 dash...
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five? A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving a relocation agreement for the removal of a static billboard at 171 Industrial Road, APN 046020430, and approving a lease and a sublease agreement for a digital billboard at 815 American Street, APN 046211160.
Second.
All right. Moved in second. Any other discussion?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to be voting against this measure. It actually had come up before us in preliminary form, I think, once before. And I just want to make clear for the record, I have a number of concerns. Some of them are kind of general, some of them are specific. Personally, I'm not a huge fan of billboards of any kind, particularly along 101. I'm also a little bit unclear about how the money that we're raising is actually going to result in improving the quality of life in San Carlos. And that's, you know, sort of a concern of mine, given that I'm not a big fan of billboards. It also occurred to me as I was thinking about this, essentially, although I'm not sure we meant to do it this way, essentially, this is almost like a tax. Because if you think about it, the people who own the property that we're leasing it from, they are essentially going into the billboard business just through us, because we don't allow them to have a billboard up there of their own. But if they pay us this fee, which again, they have to pay in order to be in that business, they get to, you know, receive some of the benefits of being in the business. And, you know, it just disturbs me to be, to be putting taxes in place like that without sort of calling them what they are. But my biggest concern actually is, is, this just feels particularly because we don't own the land, like we did with Branston. This is kind of a wink, wink, nod, nod, you know, we don't like billboards, but, and we ban them because we don't like billboards, but we're, we're going to allow them to exist as long as we get, we get the piece of the action. And, you know, it's, it's almost like we granted ourselves the right of having natural monopoly here. You could imagine, admittedly a silly example, but imagine what would happen if we did the same thing, saying, hey, you know what? Every time you open up a big grocery store in town, it causes a lot of traffic burden, so we're going to ban grocery stores. But if you cut a deal with us, we'll let you open a grocery store. Again, this just, it just feels wrong to me to do that, since we don't actually own the property. So that's why I'm going to be voting against this.
Mr. Grokot?
Mark, I think for the first time, this is history.
Second time.
Said exactly what I was going to say. And if folks will remember, when we cut these deals before with the billboards and said, you know, it's fine to do these as long as they're on our property. Now, as Mark pointed out, this one's not. But it's both with Clear Channel, no disrespect to you, sir, but it's, I know some people in the business of billboards, and Clear Channel pretty much has a monopoly on the market, especially when it comes to 101. And we're partnering in the monopoly by saying you can only have them if they're on city-owned property or leased or whatever. And so principally, I'm against it, and so I'll be voting against it, as I did before.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I understand the dissent, but my only comment, this is clearly a win-win, so I'm going to be supporting it.
Lisa, could I ask one quick question? Are there any other static billboards in San Carlos?
There are a few other static billboards, yes.
Is that right? Because we always, we did set up, as Mr. Grokot said, if you put one up, you have to take one down. So there's still actually some other static billboards around?
I don't recall how many, but there's at least two more.
Two more? All right. Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Moving on to 9A, council members report on subcommittees, regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. I only had one item to report, which I think everybody's aware of, or hopefully is aware of. We have an election coming up in November. Yes, we do. And, and we're going to pick, the community is going to pick three new council members. There are five candidates for the positions. There are also two local measures that are on the ballot. So I really encourage everybody to get involved, get themselves educated on, on all of the issues and the candidate positions and whatnot. And make sure you work your way all the way down the ballot, because unfortunately, the state requires us to be kind of at the end of the ballot, and they've got a few other things they want, they think are more important. But the really important stuff is the local stuff down the end.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Bob. I, I don't have any general reports, but I do want to bring up an item that has kind of come up recently. It's, there has been some correspondence between some residents in Public Works and myself about some of the traffic issues surrounding the pedestrian crosswalk at Belmont Avenue, which appears to be sort of an inadequate light, and I just did a little measuring in my car. It's about one-tenth of a mile between Belmont and El Camino and Howard and El Camino. And it's about another tenth to White Oak Way. And the reason I'm bringing this up is that now that we have this new public parking lot across the street next to the Caltrain tracks, it's starting to fill up with some cars, but I think it would be more greatly utilized if it were, if there was safer passage for people wanting to park over there. And as I recall, one of the reasons we did this was to encourage employees of businesses on South Laurel to park there, so that we would free up more parking spaces for customers and patrons of those businesses. So what I would really like to see us do, I think it, the time is right, that we do a traffic study to see whether or not a, either a better pedestrian light at White Oak Way and El Camino, or a full signal would be more appropriate. Because when you do the measurements, it's two-tenths of a mile from White Oak Way to St. Francis, and two-tenths of a mile from White Oak Way to Howard. So sorry for the lengthy explanation, but my reasoning is that if we had a better light in a better location, we might encourage more people, particularly employees of companies who are South Laurel, to use that parking place, because they would have safer passage. So I'd like to see if I've got some other support to do that study.
Ron, are you, are you thinking of, of asking staff to work with TNC on that?
Yes. Whatever the methodology is, yes, I would like to see that pursued.
I'd, I'd support seeing that study done.
Yeah, I'd support it too. And Reddell Park, you may be aware, Atherton, they have flashing red lights. I'm still confused, quite honestly, about the flashing red lights, but they do have red lights up there, which everyone stops. And then when they start flashing, I mean, the way I learned how it works is if you've got a flashing red, you stop, you make sure there's nobody there, then you go. But nobody seems to go, so I'm not quite sure how that works. Maybe Stephen can explain that to me some other time. But anyway, Mr. Grokot?
Just a reminder, because it's been such a long time since we had a council meeting, something that I had brought up before to staff was the issue of parking down on the north, at the most north end of town, Laurel Street meets Magnolia, that area there. And the reason I brought it up is because I'd seen something on Nextdoor about an apartment for rent, and it was so much if you didn't take a parking space. If you took a parking space, it was more. And I was suspicious of that. It's not legal to do. And we talked about having staff look into why parking has been so impacted at that end of town, and if that is an issue with building owners of apartments renting parking spaces. So I don't know if staff's done anything on that. The council agreed that it should be looked into, so I just bring it up again as a reminder.
Do they have two-hour parking on that, in that location?
Parts of it, yeah.
Okay. So there's two items that we could look at?
I've talked to community development. We're working on that item. Staff, staff is working on it.
Second one we just brought up tonight. We can have somebody look at that.
The council gave us direction on that already, so we're working.
All right. Staff comments on city administrative business?
No additional comments this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right, anything else, gentlemen? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.